Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education pursuant to the New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to Star Ledger and Cable Vision of Elizabeth on Friday, March 15, 2019. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of 500 North Broad Street. In pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth, New Jersey. We want to welcome everyone present here at Frances C. Smith Early Childhood Center as School Number 50, and to our television viewers to this March 19, 2019, meeting of the Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education's permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. We also ask that you silence the sound on your electronic devices, since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded. We may have to ask for an order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. We are pleased that you have taken this time this evening to join us here for our Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your interest in Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the Board. Participants for the public portion may sign up to the start of the meeting so that they have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states name, address, telephone number, and the reason for the person wants to comment whether it is an agenda item or a general education item. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Here.
Bathalas. Carvalho.
Present.
Chevres.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Jacobs.
Present.
Moreno Ortega.
Here.
Neron. Goncalves.
Present. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Admiral William F. Halsey Jr., Health and Public Safety Academy, JR OTC, color guard, please present your colors.
Color, out and hot. Carry, colors. Ready, cut. Forward, march. Colors reverse, march. Color, hop. Present, colors.
The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Frances C. Smith, Early Childhood Center School Number 50 students, Jacob Boca Negra and Analia Patino.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge to.
Can we give them a big round of applause? A big thank you. Our Star Spangled Banner was actually performed by Frances C. Smith, Early Childhood Center School Number 50 teacher Karen Pejak. Ms. Karen, thank you so much. And at this time, our Pledge of Ethics will be led by Frances C. Smith, Early Childhood Center School Number 50 students Noah Spencer and Annabella Fernandez.
I pledge to. Understand that my school is a special place. Listen when somebody is talking, speaking in inside voice. Dress appropriately so I can learn. Try my best to learn in school. Care about my friends, learn from my teachers and friends.
One more round of applause for our Admiral William F. Halsey, JR OTC. Thank you. And at this time, we may be seated, and we now present the core beliefs video.
We believe all students can learn and achieve at high levels regardless of race, ethnicity, culture, neighborhood, household income, or home language.
All means all. We will narrow the achievement gaps of students by providing a high-quality education to ensure that all of our students are college and career-ready.
We believe teachers make a positive difference in student achievement. Teacher, we prepare all students for success in college, career, and our technological global society.
We believe that teachers are central in a child's life. Having an effective teacher is the single most important factor in student success.
We believe that effective leaders demonstrate unwavering commitment to high levels of achievement for all students.
Leaders, we amplify and support practices that promote high level of achievement for all students.
We believe that parents and caregivers are both valued partners and active participants in their children's learning. A shared sense of mutual responsibility for learning is the foundation for family involvement to ensure student success.
We are committed to engaging parents and caregivers in their children's education. We will develop a coordinated strategy that enables parents and caregivers to play an active role in building and sustaining family support for their children's learning and academic success.
We believe that every member of the Elizabeth Public Schools team has responsibility in producing and supporting high levels of achievement for all students.
Every member of the Elizabeth Public Schools team will make a measurable contribution to the success and achievement of all students by ensuring equitable distribution of resources throughout the organization.
Can I please have one big round of applause, ladies and gentlemen? This is our three- and four-year-olds. This is our future, and this is exactly what they're doing, and we are beyond proud of each and every single one of them. So, thank you. So, thank you, thank you, and thank you. And there go the mommies and daddies, yep. Go get their babies. Thank you, parents, thank you. At this time, I ask my fellow colleagues to join me up front for us to do our presentations, which are only two of them, so it'll be early night, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, everyone. We end our opening calendar this evening with a community excellence recognition. The Elizabeth Board of Education would like to present a resolution in honor of the extraordinary level of generosity that has been presented to one of our schools and to our district. Whereas, the goal of the Elizabeth Public Schools is college preparedness, career readiness, and on-time graduation for every child. And while Elizabeth Public Schools receives state and federal funding as a resource to prepare students for post-secondary education and rewarding careers through vigorous classroom instruction, it is also very fortunate to receive the assistance of exceptional contributors from the greater community who provide their resource to help our students to achieve their dreams. Whereas, Patrick Hackett, through his many philanthropic endeavors, has supported the students of Elizabeth High School Frank J. Sicarelle Academy and students throughout our district in their extraordinary activities for preparing and attending colleges. Patrick Hackett donated $7,500 in 2018 for juniors and $15,000 in 2019 for 50 juniors to have the opportunity to take a full Princeton Review course from college entrance exam preparedness. He also donated $2,400 to provide a consultant to speak to parents and students at Elizabeth High School, as well as to counselor and administrators for all seven high schools about college admissions in an effort to inform families and encourage even more Elizabeth students to pursue of college education. Therefore, be it resolved that this resolution will be spread on the official minutes of the Elizabeth Board of Education minutes, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Patrick Hackett for all of his generous donations to our school. Mr. Hackett, would you please join me? On behalf of the Elizabeth Board of Education, we present this resolution to you with our gratitude for all that you have done for our schools. We don't take things like this lightly, and it's fitting that we're doing this today considering we're trying to balance a budget today, and that you go above and beyond for our students. But you sure do make a difference, and on behalf of all of our board members, our students, our staff, we thank you from the bottom of our heart.
Thank you.
Can we have the principals and the VP? The family, want to come up and take a picture with us? No, you sure? Good evening, everyone. Our Stars of Excellence honoree for this evening helped connect us with the Community Excellence Award recipient at our last business meeting. Through making contact with Mr. Joseph Cuppitts after learning on social media of his interest to donate his personal library to a school district, Elizabeth High School Frank J. Sicarelle Academy was able to secure Mr. Cuppitts' donation of approximately $10,000 to $15,000 library books to be used in their library. Please join me in recognizing the diligence of Elizabeth High School Frank J. Sicarelle Academy mathematics teacher, Michelle Nam, and her dedication to providing a high-quality education to the students of Elizabeth High School Frank J. Sicarelle Academy. Michelle, please come forward to receive your certificate. At this time, I would like to share a couple remarks before opening the meeting to public participation. I have designated office hours from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. every Monday night during which Elizabeth families may have an appointment to meet with me and discuss any issues or concerns pertaining to Elizabeth Public Schools. Well, we haven't seen a brief video today, so it has been postponed for a little bit. But I had had the opportunity to visit several more of our schools since the last board meeting. It was, again, wonderful meeting the students and staff and seeing the activities they have prepared for special events such as Read Across America and for Women's History Month. Speaking of Women's History Month, I want to acknowledge all the women who serve our central offices and schools as administrators, teachers, and certified and support staff for their unwavering commitment to preparing our students to succeed in college, in their careers, and in their lives. I especially would like to recognize my colleagues Diane Barbosa, Charlene Bathless, Maria Carvallo, Eliana Chevres, Natalie Hernandez, and Rosa Moreno Ortega, who are so supportive, work so hard, and dedicate so much time to serving the Elizabeth community. Sitting as president alongside a woman vice president on a woman-majority Board of Education and seeing other... Sorry, Jerry. And seeing other women leaders in elected positions from the municipal level up to United States Congress shows the amazing progress we have made as women. I am proud to be a part of this progress that continues to empower women to have positive and reliable impacts on their communities. I also see the promise of our young women students at our schools through reading and hearing about their excellent achievements. I am eager to see them continue to grow and eventually step up as the new generation of leaders in our community and beyond. Looking ahead, April is Autism Awareness Month. The highest rate in the U.S. at which autism affects children, 1 in 34 children in New Jersey, is a powerful reminder of the critically important work we have before us to ensure every child receives a high-quality education that prepares them for the future's success and to make positive contributions to society. During my visits to more of our schools next month, I'm looking forward to seeing how we are providing equity at our schools to address all of our students' needs as well as the autism awareness activities from our very socially-conscious schools. Thank you. At this time, the microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to the session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on the order of the sign-in. Each statement made by participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to 60 minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. The following rules for public participation shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. A person shall address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Comments or questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. At this time, I call upon... Eva Texera?
Buenas tardes. Pedí un traductor. Ana es mi nombre.
Sorry. Disculpa, Ana.
Me pareció super interesante el video que vi al principio cuando se habla de las oportunidades que se le da a todos los estudiantes por igual en todas las escuelas.
It was very interesting to see the video that she had seen with the equality we offered to all our students within the school system here.
Desafortunadamente, para mí en este día y en esta semana pasada eso no se ha visto realizar porque la maestra de mi hija estaba en forma por toda la semana hasta el día de hoy no ha regresado y no han tenido un sustituto. Los chicos no están aprendiendo.
She says unfortunately that was true until this week where her child's teacher was absent and... No han tenido un sustituto?
No.
And the students have not had a substitute teacher.
So, el día de hoy tuvieron una, pero aparentemente la señora está asignada para otra escuela y mañana ya no va a regresar.
Today, they did have a substitute, however, the sub they had today has been assigned to another school as she understands it, and she will not be there tomorrow.
Los niños se dividen en diferentes clases con diferentes maestras, pero la clase de mi niña es bilingüe. Ella está supuesta a estar aprendiendo el español.
They've been dividing the children to different classes, assigned to different classes, however, her daughter is in a bilingual program.
So, muchos niños entienden. Muchos niños no entienden el inglés perfectamente.
Many students understand English but not all of them understand it perfectly.
Se les hace difícil.
Makes it difficult for them.
La principal me comunicó que ella sí ha solicitado los sustitutos en el sistema, pero nadie ha venido. Nadie. En siete días.
She says that the principal assured her that they had requested for substitutes, however, in the last seven days, nobody had showed up.
So, esto es una situación que se está haciendo de las manos y es preocupante. Los exámenes vienen, los benchmarks, los niños lo hacen en español, y si ellos están aprendiendo inglés, se van a confundir, no van a tener buenos grados, y eso es decepcionante para ellos porque ellos trabajan muy duro.
Says it's very unfortunate because assessments are coming up now, and the students are not going to be prepared to take the necessary assessments and perform well on all those tests and so forth.
So, le pido por favor que ustedes hagan lo que tengan que hacer. Los niños necesitan eso, ellos necesitan aprender.
She's asking that you all do what due diligence and need to do, do what needs to be done in order to get the children their proper assignments with a teacher and...
No, nada más.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Texera. At this time, I call upon Ms. Cynthia Herrera.
Buenas noches, también necesito un traductor, por favor.
Oh, Mr. Hackett. Mr. Minoz, please? Thank you.
Siguiendo con el mismo caso de la señora anterior, mi niño está en el mismo salón, en el mismo grado, y tiene el mismo problema. Él ha tenido problemas con las maestras en toda esta semana porque los han dividido de clase, y no han podido tener una comunicación buena con las maestras porque ya estaban acostumbradas a una maestra. Ha tenido...
Señora, la escuela 15?
School 15. Same situation as the prior parent where her child is in the bilingual program, and he's been moved around to different classes this week as a result of not having a teacher or substitute.
Sí, bueno, también yo he visto el video de cómo los niños han presentado, y la educación se ve que es muy buena. También he visto el caso, fui a la reunión para los niños con talento de la escuela 7, y me gustó mucho eso, entonces yo estaba pensando en mandar a mi niño para que él pueda dar el examen porque tiene calificaciones altas, pero ahora con todo lo que ha pasado, pues no sé si él esté preparado para que pueda dar el examen. pues no sé si él esté preparado para que pueda dar el examen.
She says she has also seen the video of the excellent education we offer in Elizabeth and that her son has had high test scores and she's considering having him apply to the School 7 or the GT School program, but she's concerned now that missing classes or not having an instructor for this time period may impact him.
Porque bueno, toda esta semana han tenido un retraso, han tenido otras maestras pero no tienen tareas, no han avanzado en la educación. Incluso hemos tenido reuniones con la misma maestra mucho antes de que ella se enferme para que ella nos muestra el plan de trabajo que hace en todo el año para que nosotros como padres podamos ayudar a nuestros niños, pero no hemos obtenido la respuesta de la maestra, ¿no? Solo nos ha dicho que no puede darlo y no nos ha presentado nada más.
They had attempted to have meetings with the teacher prior to her being absent in order to get the required, I guess, lessons that the teacher was providing the students, but they have not had any success in getting those lessons in order to further prepare their students.
Bueno, yo como madre me siento responsable sobre la educación de mi hijo y necesito también ver un resultado sobre lo que está pasando.
As a parent, she feels responsible for her child's education and she wants to see it through that, you know, everything gets taken care of and put in order.
Eso es todo. Gracias.
That is all.
Thank you. Now I call upon Ms. Jaclyn Novaro. Mr. Menoz, we need your services.
Muy buenas tardes con todos los presentes. Mi nombre es Jaclyn Gutierrez. Soy una mamá que venimos por el mismo caso. Mi niño cursa el primer grado en la escuela 15.
She comes here for the same cause with her child who's at School 15 in the first grade?
Sí. Yo tengo tres niños. Tengo uno en la escuela 29, otro en la escuela 7, y otro en la escuela 15.
She has three children, School 7, 15, and 29.
Veo como madre, soy una madre presente. Con mis hijos en cada evento en la educación estoy con ellos.
She's a mother who's always present for all her children's events and in their education as well.
Personalmente, yo como madre de tres niños que están en una escuela diferente veo una gran diferencia en cuanto a la recepción que ellos tienen cuando llegan a la casa, la motivación que ellos tienen para regresar a la escuela.
She says being the mother of the three children that go to different schools, she notices a difference in their motivation when they come home after school.
Esta semana han sido siete días que mi niño, que está en la escuela 15, no ha tenido una maestra.
It's been seven days now that her son at School 15 has not had a teacher.
Me resulta tan difícil de poder enseñarle algo que realmente yo no sé cómo puede ser posible que no hayan tenido una sustituta porque ellos han sido divididos, hay como cinco clases, y han sido divididos cuatro niños en cada salón. Teniendo diferentes, digamos, cuatro niños en un salón con una nueva maestra, mi niño me dice mamá, y no es ni siquiera con la misma maestra que tienen todos los días. Una le toca a otro, el día siguiente le toca con otros, prácticamente no aprendieron nada.
Says it's been very difficult on the children because the class has been divided or subdivided to different teachers, so the children are not receiving instruction and they, she feels they haven't learned anything in the last seven days.
Yo les pido en especial un enfoque en cuanto a esa escuela porque la infraestructura es diferente para los niños. No tienen un espacio para que ellos puedan recreación, salen en la parte, para cuando van les toca jugar que son, bueno, ellos esperan los días para jugar afuera, son los días especiales para ellos. Pero el espacio que ellos tienen es un espacio donde los carros están parqueados y es muy peligroso para ellos porque se caen, se raspan, y no tienen nada para jugar.
She's at School 15, she feels the infrastructure is, could be dangerous because the children don't have enough play area and they play in the playground near where the cars are parked in the parking lot, so to her that is a concern.
Sí. Otra cosa, yo sé que se acerca el tiempo de calor. Muy pocas veces tengo el tiempo para poder venir a estas reuniones debido a que tengo a mis tres niños, mi esposo trabaja. Quisiera saber en qué estado está también lo de los aires de aire acondicionado porque ya viene ese tiempo. Realmente yo creo que toda madre, todos padres queremos que nuestros hijos estén motivados y estén en un lugar seguro y yo especialmente les digo porque yo soy una madre activa y tengo mis tres niños. Mi niño, él es diferente, él tiene las cosas diferentes, no tiene lo mismo que mis otros niños y como mamá yo no puedo hacer nada. Lo único que puedo es tratar de enseñarle de lo que viene de mí.
Being that her child is at School 15 and not the same schools as her other children, she's concerned for her child's well-being and his safety and she's concerned with the upcoming months, the heat index in the classrooms and what the district is doing with reference to possibly having a cooler area with air conditioning and so forth is one of her concerns.
Señora, para clarificar, la escuela 15 es uno de nuestros proyectos en este año en cual se ha identificado para que tenga aire acondicionado.
Bueno, yo le agradezco mucho eso. Realmente yo he tenido a mi niño que ahora está en la escuela 7. Él estuvo también en kindergarten y primer grado en esa escuela y fue difícil pasar esos veranos con él, pero él ahora está en otra escuela, pero yo tengo a mi niño ahí todavía y es difícil mandarlo porque yo he ido a conversar con la principal y me dice si la temperatura no llega a 90, pero yo no cercioro de que la temperatura esté en 90. No los mueven a otro, a otro lado del gym cuando hace calor.
She stated that her other child that's now at School 7 had been at School 15 at one point and she knows how hot it can get in there, so that's a concern she has and that she had addressed her concerns with the principal and the principal had assured her, assured her that the temperature would not reach 90 degrees.
So, I failed to translate for the community, so I apologize. I shared with the parent that School 15 is one of our schools that had been identified to add air conditioning. We have three schools identified, School 2, School 15, and School 16 that are active projects at this time in which air conditioning is being installed.
Bueno, muchas gracias. Muchas gracias. Es la preocupación que yo tengo como padre y muchas gracias por escucharme y por el tiempo.
She says thank you and she says she hope you understand her concerns as a parent.
At this time, yes. Oh, okay, right after our last parent. Thank you. At this time, I call upon Ms. Crystal Pozz.
I feel so sick right now being here. As some of you know, my son has special needs. I feel like I'm shaking. I feel like I'm doing something bad. I'm doing something bad. Just talk. Okay. I know, that's why I feel like I shouldn't be here because I know all of yous and I feel like --
Drink. And just say it's one of them.
I'm like literally shaking. Stay here really, please. Okay, so, as some of you know, like, my son has special needs. He's being evaluated for an IEP right now, but from, I put the IEP because I had done early intervention with him, but he's always been good in school, he's always done really great in school, but from February until now, he's gotten really aggressive in school. He runs out of school. Since September till now, he's run out of school eight times. Yesterday, which he actually left the school, he actually left the gate from the school and they had to chase him down. And I feel like the staff is there, but I feel like the administration is pushing for my son to leave the school and he's already getting an IEP, he got all the testing done. They already told me that the IEP, I should be having a meeting by Friday, but I've been told already since last week to get him home schooled, which I denied it because I feel like without the IEP, we should wait for the IEP to know what the child study team is saying. And administration is just like, no, well, we can't do it, he needs homeschooling. And I'm like, no. Now, today they came and they gave me a letter saying for me to transfer my son to Trinitas all day. And I'm like, no, that's not happening. So, that's how I ended up here because I feel like they're not giving me a choice than to come here to talk to you guys. I've spoken to other people in the special services. I emailed them, well, not emailed them, but I called them. I called Perform Care. I've gone to a psychiatrist with my son. I put him in therapy. I put him in extra activities. I'm doing everything I have to do as a parent, but now I feel like the school is not doing what they have to do. They're just pushing my son away. They're just saying here, well, I can't handle him, you know, it's a safety protocol, I have to take him out. Take him out, put him homeschooling, and I don't feel that's the way. And I feel like I needed to come here because I don't know what else to do.
Mrs. Pozz, before you leave, I would like to be able to coordinate a meeting with our director of special services so that you can share what your experience has been. I'd like to set that up for tomorrow if that's possible for you at the time that is convenient so we can review what your experience has been.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, seeing that there is no more public participation, at this time, I close the public comment portion of this meeting. I was told that now we have our president's tour video ready to be previewed. Let's go for it.
¿Quieres de ponerte té?
¡Té!
Cuando cuidamos té.
¡Nosotros, los amigos, te lo hace!
Y la clase.
Y la maestra, ¿verdad?
Que es muy importante. Sí. There's no, there's no, you're not ever young enough and it's never too early to start thinking of that. And you are your own biggest supporters. Your family, your guardians are your biggest supporters and you also have your administrators, your teachers, and they will always support you 110%, but you need to believe in yourself. And who reads at home also after school? Don't lie, because I will ask your teachers.
We all read.
We all read at home, right?
Yes.
So, whoever doesn't read as much, you're going to promise me one thing, okay? That if you don't read at home every day when you get home before your bedtime, you're going to start reading. Is that fair? Yeah?
I want to be an artist and a chef.
You want to be an artist and a chef? Very, very creative. We don't see that kind of mixture there. Well, don't you ever give up on that. Why do you want to be an artist?
Because I draw so much.
You do? Hmm. I'm going to want to see some of your drawings, okay?
I want to be a doctor or a nurse.
So, why do you want to be a doctor or a nurse?
So, I can help people like my mom if she's sick.
Yep. Very thoughtful. Very thoughtful. Who else wants to share their dreams? Yeah.
Famous soccer player.
You want to be a famous soccer player? You like soccer? What's your favorite team?
Real Madrid.
Wow, good choice. Good choice, Real Madrid.
How did you become president and where did you become president?
So, I just became the president of the Elizabeth Board of Education this past January and I have been sitting on the Board of Education for the past four years. Okay? I just want to say that I am so proud that you guys are, you know, taking this pre-algebra class and also going on high schools. I know that we have the Bullwood Finance Academy, so if you guys wanted to continue to pursue numbers. Don't you ever forget about believing in yourself. You are your number one supporter. Okay? So, everyone from being a basketball player, football player, teachers, judges, dancers, artists, animators, actors, don't you ever give up on yourself. I just want to let you know that we're both here because we love you. We love you a lot, a lot, a lot. And just like we're friends, we all have to be friends, okay? And we all have to help each other to learn. And every day, you need to thank your teachers and your moms and your dads and all your family for loving you. And thank you, and you have to tell them that you love them too, okay?
Well, thank you to our IT department for getting that up and running. We truly appreciate it. At this time, seeing that we have more public participation, we are going to request a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meeting Act specifically for discussion of personnel contracts and legal matters. The board will reconvene in public and may take formal action. Let me just make sure I'm not forgetting anything. Yep. Can I have a motion and a second to go into private?
Motion to go to private?
Second. Motion has been probably moved and seconded. Mr. Kennedy?
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes. Once again, to our public, you're more than welcome to stay with us, but we are going into private. Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
At this time, I ask Madam Superintendent to please present the HIB report for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pursuant to Board Policy 5131.1, Harassment, Intimidation and Bullying, and New Jersey Statute 18A:37, the following report is being provided this evening. A packet of the summaries of the cases reported to you at the February 21st Board meeting will be reviewed. The statute provides a specific timeline for the district and the board to take certain actions pertaining to HIB investigations. After the investigations have been reviewed by the superintendent, the results of the HIB investigations is required to be reported, and the results of those investigations provided to the board members at the next regularly scheduled meeting. The report was provided to you at the February 21st meeting. At the next regularly scheduled meeting after the report for HIB investigations has been reviewed, the statute requires that the board issue a decision in writing to affirm, reject or modify the superintendent's decision pertaining to the cases reported to you at the last meeting. In order for you to do so, the packet of investigation summaries were provided. I will now review the summary report. With regard to victim information for the February/March 2019, a total of 19 males, a total of 24 females, a total of 31 regular education students, a total of 12 students with disabilities were investigated. With regard to offender information, a total of 31 males, 27 females, 50 general education students and eight students with disabilities were investigated. With regard to the actions taken and the services provided, a total of 19 students were provided with skill development, 37 were provided counseling services, two behavioral intervention, nine students were provided with outpatient treatment, 10 students were provided with either a change in class or a change in placement in school, and 10 in-school detentions were assigned. With regard to out-of-school suspension days, there were, there was a range of 17 to 56 for students that were either male or female. There were five. With regard to race and ethnicity, a total of eight students were African-American, one Caucasian, eight Hispanics, 14 were regular education, and three were special education. Seven students were provided an administrative counseling. two students' referrals to agencies were provided; six have ongoing monitoring that has been assigned. And then with regard to the type of HIV investigation, one was related to race and national origin; two, with regard to sexual orientation; three, regarding gender; five, regarding mental, physical, or sensory; eight, with regard to other categories; 22, no facts. With regard to summary of findings, 22 cases, no facts substantiate the allegation; therefore, the allegations were dismissed; six were categorized as not being conclusive; therefore, monitoring will continue; and 14, HIV occurred under statutory policy. And Mr. Vassler has provided on the last page of the report the incidents from September 6th through March 11th with a summary to date by individual school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve these -- this HIV report?
Motion to approve the HIV report.
Second. Motion has been properly made and seconded. Mr. Kennedy?
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Goncalves.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy, we would like to add to the agenda Resolution Memorandum of Agreement, Elizabeth Trade Unions. Can I have a motion? Any second on this resolution, please? To add to the agenda.
Motion to add to the agenda. MLB agreement.
Need a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Goncalves.
I would like to pass the agenda from Tab 1 through Tab 10P with the added item as well.
And also 10Q.
Sorry, I missed that one. So it's from Tab 1 to Tab 10Q. Correct?
Yep. Included in there prior to doing that, we need to do a second reading on our revised bylaw for Board Self-Evaluation 9400X. This is the second reading, and the resolution for adoption is included in there. And we also have a first reading of File Code 2225, our new equity policy. That policy is available for review in the office of the School Business Administrator Board Secretary.
Madam President?
Yes, Board Member Barbosa.
Can I have a motion to Table 10C, Resolution 10C?
Okay. Second. We need a second. Yep. Second.
Madam President? I'd like to put a motion on the floor to Table 10...
There's a motion on the table.
10C is up there right now.
So let's do that motion first. So let's do 10C first. Okay, so it has been properly moved and seconded to Table Tab 10C. Mr. Kennedy, can you do a roll call, please?
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Goncalves.
Yes.
Board Member Jacobs?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to put a motion on the floor to Table Resolutions 10D to 10G.
I second that motion? Motion has been properly moved and seconded. That is correct. Properly moved and seconded. Mr. Kennedy, can you take a roll call for that, please?
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Goncalves.
Yes. Sorry about that. Okay, so now we can go. Okay, so now I ask for a motion to pass the agenda from Tab 1 through Tab Q. Am I missing anything, Mr. Kennedy?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Is there a motion? Any second on the table?
Motion to pass the agenda in a whole from Tab 1 to Tab Q.
Second.
10Q. Yep. Motion has been properly made and seconded. Mr. Kennedy, can you finish this off?
Sure. Barbosa.
Yes, except want to abstain on Tab 7, Page 4.
Carvalho.
Yes, with an abstention on Tab 2, Page 24; Tab 4A, Number 6, and Number 18.
Chevres.
That was Tab 2A, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes. Chevres.
I don't know if she's here. Is she here? I can't see. Is that her?
Okay, yes, we abstention in Tab 4A, Number 2; Tab 2A, Page 25.
Hernandez.
Yes to all.
Jacobs.
Yes to all tabs, please.
Tab 5, May Jake.
And Goncalves.
Yes to all.
We're good on that?
Yes, everything moved past.
Okay. Sorry for that little confusion. Including the budget.
Including the budget.
Including the budget. Can we throw fireworks right now? Okay. Any old business or new business from our board members?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Board Member Carvalho.
I just want to thank everyone for supporting Women's History Month. We had some amazing speakers who went out to all of our schools, from Councilwoman Patricia Perkins Auguste to our Elizabeth Business Administrator Bridget Anderson. We also invited the Union County Division Youth Services Assistant Director Marcella Nunez; our Public Information Officer Kelly Martin. We were well represented by our Elizabeth Police Department. Our own Jennifer Perez, who's here, Officer, also came to speak to our young ladies. And Debbie Ann Anderson also came down; Yogi Barros. It was impressive to see how our young ladies reacted to actually having women in front of them who spoke to them and showed them that they can be whatever they want to be. You know, a woman's role is not to be home and cooking and cleaning. These were women who run government, who run businesses, who showed them that they came from exactly where they are. These women are from Elizabeth, and they work in the surrounding towns and cities or government offices or they run businesses and jobs, and these young ladies connected with them. I know for a fact that some of our high school young ladies have reached out to some of the women who have spoke to them, and they're going to keep in touch with each other and keep connecting, and hopefully they'll -- they've inspired these young ladies to be future leaders. So for that, I thank my board members, superintendent, and all of our staff for allowing this to happen, and I hope that you support this initiative next year again because it's important for the young ladies in our schools to know that they have people to look up to who have great careers and that that too can be them someday. So thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Carvalho. Anyone else has any few words to say? Board Member Barbosa?
Yep, thank you, Madam President. So as we're finishing up March, I just want to highlight what's coming up in April as important to remember, autism awareness. So I just want to highlight for you to -- and we'll make it very public. Our awareness calendar will be heavily stocked with all the highlights that will be going on throughout the district. So stay tuned for that. We're going to make it a big, big, nice April to celebrate our special needs children. We'd like to do it all year, but I know we like to focus April to do it. So stay tuned, and I'll keep everybody updated. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, Board Member Marina Ortega.
First, I want to say thank you to the Policy Committee who present the equality policy and looking forward to working our district implement. I'm very, very excited. It's one of the almost first urban district who will have this kind of policy. You can search in the Internet. It's not too many districts in New Jersey, outside New Jersey, yes. A special thank you for Jerry Jacobs, who is the chairperson. I also want to thank members of the community who collect supplies, clothes, and different kind of thing where our families are affected by the fire in this city. Like, everybody know the families. We have families affecting, and I have different kind of members of the community who I know they collect, and I want to say thank you because I know you put that time to collect and deliveries not only clothes, supplies, and food, and you take time for your personal time. That's me. This is all for my...
Thank you, Board Member Marina Ortega. Anyone else? Okay, so I just want to inform the public tonight, we had the passing of a balanced budget. Woo-hoo! Yes, I think everyone at this table, whoever is not at this table with us tonight, a special thank you to our Finance Committee, to our Business Department, for everyone that has worked very tirelessly day after day, so many hours that were put into this. Very happy to announce that we have a 0% tax increase as well, and we're really looking forward to continue to do what's right and, you know, doing what's right for our students. So thank you, and kudos to each and every one of you. Anything else?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes.
I'm happy for the budget. I want to let the know the community, like another urban district, like for example, Jersey City will be affect minus 39 millions. That's me. I'm very proud of each one of the staff members and board member who are part of that community working hard because as a teacher who will be affecting for that budget in Jersey City, I'm happy like we will now be affecting right here in Elizabeth Police School. Thank you.
Yes, a lot of hard work went into this. How many years?
Four.
Four years, yeah.
Madam President?
Yes.
So this -- I want to thank the Finance Committee, our chair, who stand near on our comptroller, our business administrator, our superintendent, and everyone in the countless, countless hours of work that has gone into preparing this budget. It seems to -- we think it would get easier, but Mr. Kennedy, I think he smiles all the time because it seems to get harder year after year to balance a budget, to be able to go back to the teachers and to the staff across the board and say, "No layoffs," and to be able to tell people in the City of Elizabeth that there will not be a tax increase, and that is all because of the hard work, not only of the Finance Committee, of all the board members, but of the amazing staff that we have, and kudos to the Business Office at the Mitchell Building because I know for a fact that there's people still in the office right now crunching numbers, and Mr. Kennedy, you're here by yourself tonight because of that. So thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you to all of the board members for believing in each other and knowing that when there's a will, there's a way not to lay people off and not to raise taxes. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Board Member Carvalho. Anyone else before we adjourn the meeting? Well, seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Kennedy?
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes, sir.
Chevres.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Goncalves.
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone, and enjoy the rest of your evening.